You saw that Keith Corey has stepped down from his position, so he's requesting to advertise for a new director. And I think that's in your packet. The, uh, I pretty much just adapted the last round of qualifications for the position, and then on the last page is the advertisement we'd like to get posted for this week, so it can advertise for two weeks.
Has the qualifications changed in any way?
Um, not dramatically. I think, you know, a lot of what we've learned this summer is, um, you know, a lot of Keith's qualifications were more athletic director inclined, and I really think that what our recreation commission is at this point, or our recreation program is, um, we're gonna gear it more towards family-oriented activities, because that seems to be what people are asking for. I mean, we're not really a town of athletic programs. We don't have the capacity or facilities right now, so we're kinda gonna go in maybe a little different direction with the next person that we're looking at.
This advertisement won't go out this week, it'll be the week after, because Nancy will not be here this weekend, um, has requested that she does it next week. It won't be this week, so it'll be next week.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Anyone have any questions?
I, I have a question. Have we gone out for advertisement for the previous director of Recreation? Is that what we did?
Yes.
This is an appointment by the council, correct?
Right.
Yeah. Goes to the personnel board.
Does it go through the Personnel Board?
Yes, it does. It's a hired, it's a salaried position, so...
It's a salaried position.
Yeah, so it goes to the Personnel Board, and then I believe it goes to the Administrator, and he recommends to the council.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we authorize the Recreation Commission to advertise for a Recreation Program Coordinator.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second, all those in favor? Unionism.
Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Town Administrator Authorization to Advertise RFP RFQ for Consulting Engineer. Matt?
I don't get any feedback. All right. Madam President, as many members of the council will recall, Deidre Piva, who has been the longstanding Town Engineer on consulting basis, left her current, her former firm and has moved on. And the engineering firm has now assigned us a small number of subject matter experts on an on-call basis, and we've lost that institutional memory, that ability to integrate all the numerous aspects of a project: traffic plus infrastructure, including utilities, plus the actual implementation of site plans. And it is my personal opinion that that configuration that's been offered by our current firm does not serve the needs of the town very well. I will not speak for any other town officials, certainly not the Planning Board, although I note the chairman is here if he'd like to chime in on this. We, we need somebody who's a dedicated resource, who learns the town, understands how all these different aspects of projects fit together. So we're not just looking for an RFP, we're not just looking for the least cost provider, we're looking for someone who has the right qualifications. The only thing I'd like to change on page three, on page three, the very last page, these percentages on the selection criteria, I just, I wanna strike those. And we'll, we'll just consider all eight of those necessary criteria equally important to the selection. Uh, what I would anticipate here, this is not an employee, this is a contractual relationship. I'd like to open the bids, open the RFP RFQ, share them with, um, the Planning Board, and have the Planning Board's input. Uh, I would hope that the Board would designate one or two members to sit in with me and do interviews, and we'll rate them, try to arrive at a consensus, and come to the council with a recommendation for approval.
Yeah, Matt, where is, um, what firm is Deidre with now?
You would ask. Uh, I have her card.
Stu?
No, she was with Commonwealth, she's left. She's with Steer Engineering, I believe. Um, and it's a, it's a, um...
Steer?
Yeah, it, it's a, it's a classic example in the, yep, in the engineering world where, you know, you have a really strong lead engineer who starts to build a firm around her, which is what she's done. And she's basically been able to pick off some of the better engineers from some of the other smaller firms to join with her in her venture.
Any questions from the council? Stu, do you have any questions for us or for Matt?
Well, I'd just like to say that, um, we have very limited engineering expertise on the Planning Board. Most of us are not engineers, and we rely very heavily on our consulting engineer. And Deidra, uh, when she did site plan review, would very often give us two to three pages of questions and comments, and she was very good about finding, uh, omissions, finding errors on the plans. Um, but she also did two other things that we really appreciated. She would go out onto the site and take a good, hard, careful look to make sure that plans were being followed. And thirdly, she was very good at working with the civil engineer, um, who represented the developer, to work on a one-on-one basis to, uh, come up with a win-win situation so everybody would be happy. So, um, I can't emphasize too strongly to you that the Planning Board really relies on, uh, having a really strong consulting engineer.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
I move that we authorize the Town Administrator to advertise for a request for proposals and request for qualification for a consulting engineer per the Agenda Item G2 attached.
I'll second for discussion.
All right. I have a second from Brad. Um, Dave?
Matt, are there a lot of these consultant firms out there, or...
Well, it certainly isn't, and it is not an infinite supply, but I would think that we would be able to send this RFP RFQ package to at least ten, to a dozen firms, and hope for some response from more than one.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion? I have a motion in second, all those in favor? Town Administrator, ratification of IBPO contract July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2018 with fiscal impact summary. Matt?
Madam President, I'm just gonna recuse myself from this matter.
Madam President, I would note that the contract language and the fiscal impact statement for this contract were posted timely. In fact, they were posted in advance of the requirement under the law. And I don't want to, um, belabor every single detail of the contract. It's a very complex, complex contract. There are many, many provisions that deal with how our sworn police officers are compensated, the various stipends that they receive, and the various benefits that they receive. I will, for the sake of the public who didn't want to go through my seven-page fiscal impact statement or the contract itself, summarize it as follows. In year one of the contract, zero percent salary increase, that's a zero. Year two, three percent. Year three, three percent. Those raises are offset, however. In year two, the health and wellness stipend will be discontinued. It equates to roughly a 0.5% of salary line item, because it costs about $500 per officer. And then in year three, there'll be an additional 0.5% of their gross pay given back to the town in order to meet our OPEB, so-called OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits Costs, associated with the officers and their benefits. So, in reality, this works out to be a zero, two and a half, two and a half, in terms of the actual financial impact on the town. And that's why, when you see the total, total fiscal impact of all base salary changes, it's just about $27,000 over the course of three years. It does filter through a little bit additionally through longevity and other compensation that is driven by the base salary. The, the point that the contract saves money and offsets those salary increases, it is in the form of a one FTE reduction. So we are, in fact, going to run one officer short from our roster. We'll be at 26 instead of 27 for the three years of this contract, in order to save the necessary funds. That means that the only exposure, financial exposure to the town from this contract is in the health insurance plan. Early on, the negotiating team determined that we did not want to, um, go forward with a health plan redesign with any collective bargaining unit that has binding arbitration. Because what we felt would happen is we would have an offset. So if we went and tried to redesign the health insurance plan, the, any future arbitrator would just kick it back to us in the form of a salary increase to offset. So we were willing to take, uh, the necessary actions to keep salary and compensation very stable over the next three years with the one FTE reduction, and the town would accept the risk of keeping its current high deductible plan as it is configured with both the fire union and the police union for this round of contract negotiations. As we all recall, this year, the town experienced a 13.3% increase in its health insurance premiums as a result of very negative claims experience. That's our most recent memory, but I asked the council to please recall that in the two years prior to that, you were at a 0% rate increase one year and a 4% reduction the following year. So your claims experience was so modest, you actually did extremely well in terms of the cost of health insurance. Even if you factor in what I consider to be a responsible forecast, that we would go from a 13.3% increase in one year and gradually work our way back towards the market rate of inflation for, for health insurance costs by fiscal year 2018, the total cost of the health insurance benefits to our police officers would be just about $211,000 over the course of three years. So really, it's about $70,000 a year increase in the cost of operating this department. Um, I think it's a pretty good contract. It provides the town with a great deal of stability. It did provide those officers who are sticking with us and are deeply invested in Tiverton Police Department the opportunity to earn a couple of raises over the next couple of years and improve their situation. Uh, and there was no forced retirement or forced layoff. It is a vacancy that was determined that we will not fill. So with those thoughts in mind, pardon me, I recommend adoption, ratification of the contract.
Any questions from the council?
Madam President, uh, to the Administrator. The chief had, uh, expressed some concerns and, with some problems he was having with staffing at certain times. Uh, I wonder if those issues had been, uh, resolved in this contract. And you, I don't know how deep I can go into it, I mean, I think we were in executive session when we were talking about it, but, uh, I guess it was staffing at certain times with senior level officers.
We've, um, we've not addressed those problems directly head-on. I think we get to them in a roundabout way, in the sense that this final proposal looks very much like the last and final offer made to us by the union. So this was a salary structure that they felt they could live with and maintain their current officer base, retain as many of their current people as they can. When we talk about retention in the department, uh, the one issue I always try to draw attention to, to individual officers contemplating leaving the Tiverton Police Department, is that the townspeople have made a significant investment in catching up on their pension plan. And many other cities and towns cannot say that. So you might get a great raise if you go over to, I don't wanna throw anybody under the bus, but one of the bigger cities in the West Bay section of Rhode Island, you may get a great raise leaving Tiverton. But if you should retire from that department, there's no guarantee that the pension promises made to you will ever be kept, because they're so horribly underfunded. But here in Tiverton, the taxpayers are stepping up to the plate and being responsible and keeping those promises in place. So that's an important retention consideration. And, uh, we got another positive report from our investor, so I'll, the next council meeting, I'll update you on the pension fund. Uh, as for the overall marketplace for recruiting police officers, everybody is in a really difficult bind, and this is all the way across the country, California to New England. Fire, department employees, firefighters, and police officers are getting extremely difficult to recruit. So in California, some police departments are offering a $10,000 signing bonus, and existing employees are being given a bonus for recruiting someone who's eligible to be employed. Our most recent advertisement and recruitment process yielded us, after physical agility test and the exam, only two eligible candidates. So we're experiencing the same trend as everyone else. It is unlikely that this contract would have a material impact on those decisions being made by people who want to apply or not apply to be police officers. Internally, in terms of, um, the net impact or the actual operation of seniority in terms of claiming overtime and other privileges, uh, is largely unchanged by this contract. Uh, it appears to be a cultural thing on our attempts, and I would defer also to the members of the council that were part of the negotiating team. We did not get very much traction when we suggested changing that aspect.
I just have one comment, Madam President. Um, Matt spoke about the increases in, in wages if you went to another town, and we did look at that, and we looked at, of course, the pension plan, and we are caught up with it and making great strides with our percentage. The other part of that puzzle is that the health and benefit package that they have is much better than they, they would have going to another department in this area. So it all kinda ties in together.
Any other comments from the council? I'd like to entertain a motion.
Madam President, uh, does the ratification include the fiscal impact summary? Or are we just ratifying the IBPO contract?
I would imagine all you're doing is ratifying the IBPO.
Okay, yeah, okay. Uh, I move that we ratify the IBPO contract July 1st, 2015 to June 30th, 2018, as proposed by the Town Administrator, as attached to, as Agenda Item G3.
Do I have a second? A second, David? Motion been made in second, all those in favor? Six, zero. Six with one extension. Open, open public forum for announcement, comments, and questions. I did not get anyone to sign up tonight. Town Administrator items and announcements, update on Senior Center windows.
Madam President, the town went to, um, bid for the replacement of first story and basement windows at the Senior Center, based upon the allocation by the Financial Town Referendum of $32,000 for said purpose. We received only one bid. The bid was for $78,000. We are going to re-advertise and try to get a more realistic set of contractors to answer. Frankly, I thought, after consulting with various parties that were interested in doing some of my own research on this particular matter, that $32,000 should be sufficient for this project. Therefore, um, I don't, I think you've already authorized me to go to advertise the bid once, I don't need to get reauthorized, I'm just gonna start the process over again. I know it's an item of interest to the members of the council, so I thought I'd update you. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Mr. Souza?
Just, just quickly, then I agree with the Administrator, and I would make the motion to re-advertise for the Senior Center windows.
Do I have a second? I really don't need a motion though, do I? Do I really? I do. Okay, motion been made in second. Discussion? All those in favor? Against? Six, one. Any further announcements? Mr. Bocek? Council announcements, comments, and questions? Any? Yep.
I have one, Madam President, so, um, again, I want, I'd like to talk about the development in the town as far as residential. Um, I was gonna put it on the agenda for this week, and, um, after speaking to Council Appellateer and, um, Kate a few times, I decided not to put it on this week. So what I found out is that, um, once we get that comprehensive plan back, um, from wherever it is right now, and make the adjustments to it, send it on to the state, get their approval, and once it comes back to us, um, the town has an opportunity to have an 18-month moratorium on building in, in the town. I would like to know, and maybe this would be a solicitor question, is that, and I know you have a meeting, Mr. Solicitor, with the developer on Souza Road Wednesday morning, I think. Is there an opportunity now to stop this by changing the zoning, or...
The, the answer is that no. But I, I have to tell you that I have given a memoranda over to the, um, town planner on this, as well as a technical review committee. Uh, that ma, that memoranda's a public document, and I think it outlines, um, the correct legal position for this, uh, for that particular development. I don't know if you've gotten a copy, but I can forward it to you.
Thank you. I would appreciate that.
Madam President, do we have the comprehensive plan being distributed, or has it been distributed? I haven't gotten my copy yet.
Nope, it is not completed. Um, they are doing one more meeting because of a technicality. Um, they had a, well, they had one person working on something for them. She's coming back. Um, I've been contacted by Cecil, there'll be one more meeting, and then it will come to us. Well, it's going to the planning board.
I think after we've reviewed the comprehensive plan, it might be appropriate for Mr. Perry to put this on the agenda, specifically identify the issues that had been discussed. Uh, I mean, I was, I told this story, I was contacted by one person who told me that I was using the wrong formula, the wrong mix of properties, and the wrong multiplier to determine how many students would come out of Souza Road, and I had said something like 600-plus, and, uh, this person assured me it was actually 704. Whatever the number is, it can be frightening, and I think we have to make sure that we're addressing this issue and addressing it reasonably.
Well, just to give you a quick, uh, I spoke to Kate this morning, actually, and there is a developer who has, um, 52 house lots that he has his permits for at the bottom of Souza Road, on, I think it's on Main Road, across from Little Bear. And I guess he's had that since 2012. So he could start whenever he feels like it, and, and start building.
I asked Kate that very same question, and she said, "He can start tomorrow morning if he files his plan." And so in theory, we, we have 52 units, and there's the other gentleman who's now filed an application for 192 units.
Excuse me, I think actually we're getting beyond the Open Meetings Act for council, council comments and announcements.
One, one question, Madam President, if you need, if I could.
Just, yeah, just be careful, because we are going...
Well, no, this was something different, but under counsel. I had, uh, I had made a request to receive a draft of the land use proposals from the concert, uh, the community, uh, Comprehensive Plan Committee. And I haven't received any information. In fact, I have, I've received zero, and I'm becoming a little bit disgusted, because, you know, I'm not gonna, I know we're gonna receive this stuff, we're gonna have time to digest it, but, you know, it, it seems to me if we were receiving some updates on where they're going, we can make suggestions now, instead of receiving the document and then having to request amendments and dragging the process. I mean, if we, we should, the committee should be more forward with the council, since initially, you know, eventually, we're gonna have to vote on that.
I think the procedure is for them to complete it, send it to the Planning Board.
But it's public meeting, it's information that should be available to the public. And this is where I'm thinking, you know, we've had an issue with the minutes, and I'm getting to the point where I think maybe an op, you know, an open meeting, a complaint should be filed, because this information should be public. It should be available, something that people can look at to see where they're going with this.
They were working on the meeting discre, um, the meeting minutes, is that correct, Matt? They were...
There should be more than minutes, there should be something available. I don't care if they send it to me as a PDF online, I don't need a printed version. Pretty much, they're all working off of laptops, there's no reason why we can't receive some information. And I think in the beginning, we were supposed to be receiving updates, if I understand correctly, when the committee was, and if we, we've received nothing.
Sally?
Uh, yes, thank you, Denise. Um, I'm just here as the liaison to the Town Council from the School Committee to thank you, when you're so busy, for meeting with us the other night, to receive our initial report from, um, that study that the town paid for, and for receiving it in such a respectful way. Thank you very much, and we'll meet again and talk about it in depth. Thank you.
Joe, I'll personally, um, call Cecil and see if he can give us some kind of an update or some kind of a draft, or of where he is, where it's going, and I'll call him tomorrow, and I'll get back to the council.
Particularly the land use, and that's where I was mostly interested.
I'll call Cecil myself. Um, I do wanna say, um, I participated in the country, um, Potting Gray Country Day Saturday, and I wanna commend everyone that was involved in the organization of that. It was a great event, it was very organized, half the town was there, and it was a real positive thing for Tiverton. And I encourage everyone next year to, to go, because it was a really community spirit and a community event. Thank you. Anyone else?
Just to say, the tractable was great, too.
Yeah, we saw you there. Town Solicitor, Items and Announcements, Notice of Claim for Action, Attorney Brian, Brian Cunha, um, Christine Batello, Ian Batello, George Batello, Charlotte Strunk, Miles Macedo, Sarah Macedo, and Ava Mastafano.
Items K1A through F are all related to the same claim. You received a statutory notice of this claim from the attorney that represents all of these people. This matter has already been referred to the trust, and they do have a file on it. Some others have gone forward. My recommendation for tonight is that on all of the claims that you've, uh, received, K1A through F, that they be denied and referred to the inter-local trust.
Any questions from the council?
I just, just to clarify, did I read correctly that they're suing because they pet, they petted the cow?
That's correct, yes.
They felt they were in danger.
The, um...
Because, because the cow died.
I, well, I'm saying, oh, they, they, these are not people that were bitten. They merely were there, and they petted the cow. And they're part of a lawsuit now.
I think they're suing because they're, they're claiming that they had some emotional and physical distress associated with a series of painful rabies shots.
They, they, they had to have shots.
The specific, the specific claim against the town was a failure to timely notify the Department of Health, which led to them having to go through a course of treatment for the rabies, which, as Councilman Appellateer said, is a very, very painful course of treatment. But as I say, that's an allegation.
That's what they're saying, it's a very painful...
Yeah, we're, we're, my recommendation is the claim be denied, have the matter referred to the trust, we have coverage for it, the case is already ongoing.
Joe, um, rabies is transmitted through saliva, um, so if they would've come to the emergency room, said that they petted it, you can't assume that they didn't get saliva on their hands and touch their mouth or touch their food. So that, so the protocol is to give them the rabies vac, vaccination, because the cow did die, so they were unable to, um, determine. So that, the petting, you just assume that they did get some kind of body fluid on them, even though, I know. All right, do I have a motion to deny? Well, I need somebody to make the motion.
Second.
Motion remain in second, all those in favor? Unanimous.
The matter should also be referred to the inter-local trust.
I like a motion to, to refer to the local trust. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion remain in second, all those in favor? Okay. Mr. Lambert?
I move that we go into closed executive session pursuant to Rhode Island general law 4246-5A2, rate potential litigation, zoning compliance.
Second.
Motion remain in second, all those in favor? Mr. Souza? Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Mello?
Aye.
Mr. Lambert?
Aye.
Mrs. Dimondaris?
Aye.
Mrs. Shabat?
Aye.
Mr. Pelletier?
Yep.
Okay, we're now in executive session, thank you.